Hold the public hearing and make a recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with the state law and county ordinance. The burden of approving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. Members that a planning commission are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners with one member from each of the five commissioner districts. Land services staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. At the close of each public hearing, you will know what the planning commission's recommendation is to the County Board of Commissioners. The County Board of Commissioners will then consider the request at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. I'm gonna go over a few brief overview of the proceedings this evening. I will read the request. While I'm reading your request, I would ask that the applicant and their representatives come forward and have a seat up at this front table. And then if the applicants would state their name for the record, but speak clearly into the microphone, it's being recorded, okay? Land service staff will then provide a staff report for the request and read any correspondence that has been received regarding the request. The applicant will then provide any input, corrections, concerns, comments, or if anything came up between the staff report or just in the recent time. Once applicant or representatives have provided their statement, testimony, the planning commission will discuss the request and ask questions of staff or the applicant. Upon completion of planning commission questions, I will ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this request. If there is, I would ask that person to come up to the podium in the corner over here. Please state your name and your address for the record. And then it don't look like too many people here tonight, but we ask that you don't talk for hours. Otherwise, I'll put like a three-minute time stamp on it, but don't look like it'd be too big a problem tonight. Be as factual as possible. Neighborhood endorsements or opposition in and of itself is not a valid reason to approve or deny an application. In order for the planning commission to evaluate your comments, we need to know your reasons for the input on the application. All statements or questions must be directed to myself, the chair, not to the applicant or not to the public. Once all comments have been received, then we'll proceed to answer them questions that you've asked as best we can, either myself or staff or another expert. When all testimony is complete, I'll close the public hearing. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further input from the audience, from the applicant or land service staff unless recognized by the chair, or if one of the planning commission members wants some type of clarification. The planning commission will review and discuss the finding of fact criteria questions. The findings are a series of questions that the planning commission is required to answer based on Minnesota statute and the requirements at ordinance. Based upon the answers to those questions, the planning commission will then vote on each question. All questions must be answered in affirmative by the planning commission to recommend approval of the request to the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission may also place conditions on the request if it deems it necessary to remediate negative finding of fact. Once the findings are complete, there will be a motion to recommend approval or denial of the request based on those findings. That will conclude that public hearing, and you can leave if you wish. Any follow-up questions should be directed to land service staff during regular business hours. Okay, first up, we have Randy and Nancy Wincher, 5818 180th Avenue, Royalton. Application for interim use permit to create a scary outdoor recreation area located in point of the southwest quarter of northwest quarter, section 25, township 39, range 32, Bellevue Township. So at this time, if you guys would state your names in the microphone for the record, please.
Randy Wincher.
Nancy Wincher.
Kirsten Wincher.
And Leila Best.
Tyler O'Stryke.
Okay, very well. Okay, I guess at this time, we'll move to our staff report. Amy, are you ready with that?
I am, Mr. Chair. This is an application to establish an outdoor recreation venue located in section 25 of Bellevue Township. The ordinance reference for this request is section 604.7, and that requires an interim use permit for outdoor recreation. Here's a plat map of the township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the permit request received from the applicant, along with a site drawing. And here's an aerial photograph of the parcel outlined in blue, and then some oblique imagery of the property as well. The applicant owns and lives on this 20-acre parcel in section 25 of Bellevue Township. The parcel is serviced by 180th Avenue, which is a paved township road. It is within a half mile of the Royalton city limits and approximately one mile east of US Highway 10. Then here's a zoomed-out aerial with the parcel outlined in blue up in the upper right, and then the city limits of Royalton and Highway 10. The applicant is requesting an interim use permit to establish a seasonal, family-friendly Halloween Woods walk slash scare called Wicked Woods. This is utilizing a path through the existing woods. The experience would be a walk through the woods on the north end of the property where guests would encounter animatronics, jump scares, and actors. The walk is expected to take about a half hour. Operation of the event is proposed for late September through the first week of November, and it would be open no more than four days per week during that time, and the proposed hours would be 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. All parking would be onsite and would utilize a new township-approved road approach. Prepackaged food and treats and hot chocolate and bottled non-alcoholic beverages may be offered. No public health licensing is required for this type of food and drink service. Porta-potties would be provided for guest use, and an onsite sign directing people to the event entrance is planned. Their surrounding land use consists of agricultural property with rural homesteads, and the nearest residence is located approximately 350 feet to the north. A large-scale seasonal pumpkin patch and fall activity business is located approximately one mile north of this property. So then here is another aerial photograph, and that's the measurement from the property line to the nearest residence. The residence isn't showing up on this map because it was built after 2020, which is our imagery. And then here is another area map with the subject property outlined in blue and the other fall business outlined in yellow. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is agriculture, goal A1 and A2, objective 1, and then local economic development, goal C1, objectives 1 and 8, goal C2, objectives 1, 2, and 7, and then also 19. Thirty-three notices were sent, no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would the applicants have anything to add to any of that?
I just want to state, the four-day week would only be MEA weekend. All the other weeks would be two days.
Okay, just on the weekends, I'm assuming.
Right. And we also want to state, the more that we've been researching, that we would like to possibly open up at 6:30 instead of 7:00, so that we could have little kids going through, and then there wouldn't be all the jump scares and all the, you know, it won't be so dark. So it'd be just for younger children at 6:30.
Okay. Okay. At this time, anybody on the planning commission board have any questions for the applicants?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marvin.
You had stated that you have adequate parking on your facility. Do you have an idea how many vehicles that would hold?
Well, we researched that. They kind of say like one acre of land could hold anywhere from 150 to 240 cars. It's like, yeah, you can't get 240 cars on one acre. We're assuming probably about 400 to 450 cars.
Oh, so you have a very large site for parking, so you would not have a problem with that?
Yes, yes. It's approximately two acres, three acres of parking.
Okay, and it sounds like you already contacted township for approach for that?
We did.
Okay. I have no more questions, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
On the times, 6:30 to 11:00, then, is that the timeframe?
Yes, I mean, we've been tossing this around, like, I don't know, do we stop sales at 11:00, or, you know, do we stop 10:45, you know?
Maybe the opening time would be best if, when you assume everybody will be gone, or...
Right, we just don't know what to expect.
Yeah.
It's...
But normally, we put in one of the conditions, the hours.
Okay.
So...
Well, does that mean ticket sales end at 11:00? When you say hours?
That's my question for you, yeah.
Yes.
Again, Mr. Chair, if I may, if we, ticket sale would be known later than 11:00, but if somebody's in line at 10:30, you know, is it gonna take them an hour to get through there? So I would be good with ending ticket sales at 11:00, but knowing that, you know, there's still people could be going through after that.
All right, thank you.
Brent, do you have any questions for the applicants?
I don't, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I got just a couple of them. One of them is for this, what would you want for an end date when you own the property, or that's kind of you guys?
Yeah, we were hoping, you know, this is our daughter Kirsten, granddaughter, I mean, if it's very successful, we would hope that they would be able to continue that as long as, you know, someone in the family owns a property.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
So what we, if you want that to, and we've had that before for interim use permits, where you just name, give the names of the individuals, that so if the property is owned by this person, this person, this person, this person?
Okay.
And then that's when, that's how that interim use permit would go, as long as one of those individuals named in the interim use permit owns the property. So we would just need those names.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And then with your 6:30 start time, have you got, given any thought if that's even early enough for them, young kids? You get late, get close to October, is it even gonna be much light by then, or you don't care about being light, or?
Um, you know, we just, we really don't know.
I'm just asking, you know.
Yeah, what to expect, like how many, we call them little monsters will be coming through, you know? Kirsten has...
You know, so my thoughts on that is, like my mom and dad were saying, that 6:30 timeframe is just gonna be for the younger kids, so it doesn't matter if it's, or I should say, you know, to us, it's not like, is it gonna be dark enough for them? It's just, we don't want them to become afraid of the walk-through, it's more just for fun. So whether if it's, I think the 6:30 timeframe is a good time to start because it might not be dark by then, but that's okay. And then, you know, the darker it gets, then it'll be more so for like the older crowd.
If I may, Mr. Chair, maybe to follow up what you're saying, is that what there, maybe you're saying is that we could maybe start it at 6 o'clock if, you know, all depends, if we have so many kids there, would we be willing to do that? Yes, the hours are still up in the air.
The other thing, too, I'd like to inject is, I don't want to plan your thing for you, but if you're gonna have MEA week and open too...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
Probably the end time is gonna be more of the issue or the hard stop, so, and then also, it depends on what kind of conditions you may or may not want to put on this, but my guess is you're gonna be more concerned with the late night, and when that's done, then what time it starts. And so if you wanted to, if you were wanting to define times, perhaps, maybe you could look at, you know, between 4:00 PM and 11:00 PM, and then you would operate within that time, and then you have that flexibility to adjust.
So we're not locked into opening at 4:00?
That's correct, but your operation hours, if you're gonna condition them into hours, or maybe you don't wanna, maybe you don't care about the start time, and you just want to condition that last ticket sales are at 11:00, so that might not be something that really even needs to be.
So that's where I was kind of going with this.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't know what my board thinks. I was looking at end time, 'cause here's why. They don't know what this is gonna turn into, MEA weekends, Thursday, Friday, maybe there's one time, four years from now, that a group wants to come out midday, a church group or something like that, to do something like that. That's why I was kind of getting to what Amy alluded to of just an end time versus a start time. They don't want to start at 9:00 in the morning and go till 11:00, you know that, but, so I just, that's why I was throwing it out there.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
My daughter and her husband got bordering property at Keith and Amy Schlichtene, and they talked to me about this earlier, and they both stated they had no problem with this here. And Keith was actually excited, he says he scared a deer over to my property. He deer hunts that frequently, so just a little concerned if it was too early and he was out there hunting, and, you know, I know there's a fair amount of hunting in that neighborhood, cougars and whatever like that, but just stating that as part of it, be concerned about that, but they have no objection to this, so.
Yes, we talked to many of our neighbors, and everything was really, everyone was accepting.
Okay. Then I have one more question. When I look at the aerial view, and I look at your map you drew, it don't line up, so the woods is on the wrong side of the driveway. So maybe if you could just tell us where your second approach would be, that would be helpful, that's what I'm looking for.
If I may approach with, something to show you guys?
Thank you. This is the north, this is our driveway, so it settles down.
So where would your second approach be on this?
Okay, if you see where it says Bellevue in the center of the, there's that opening right there, and then in the pines, it's, that's where the second approach would be.
So it's gonna come off of 180th?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I have each marked, if you want, shows what each acre is of all the, we'll call it lot 1, 2, and 3, it'll show the acre, so that's where people would be coming in. Less trees to take down.
Yep. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
Our question number one is, you know, basically safe, public safety, burden on public roadways and whatever, but I assume that that approach will be designed to obviously handle two-way traffic very well, it'll probably be wider than a typical driveway, so that there's plenty of sight line to the north end of the south.
We plan on putting in a 30-foot approach there, so that should give plenty of distance between the two.
Yep, answers that question, and that, if I'm thinking right, that's pretty much on the crest of the hill, isn't it? So you've got really good visibility both ways.
Yes, we do.
Yep, and then, yeah, I don't know, do you plan on signs or anything that kind of directs people to your spot? I don't know what's even legal or conforming, but go ahead.
Yes, Randy bought this great big lit-up sign that will be placed outside by the approach. You'll be able to see it from quite a distance, both ways, coming in in an arrow, so there won't be, you know, anyone trying to guess, well, where do I turn? It'll be really visible, huge.
Good, good. And, you know, in the past, we've always, we have either business standards or criteria that goes along with a lot of these businesses, and they state some things like, no parking on, on the, you know, on any public property, you know, so, or on the public right-of-way. So I guess I'd like to add that as a condition, and then there's a couple other conditions that are pretty much standard, but they're abide by all applicable state and local laws that apply to event venues such as, well, it's an event venue, but a recreational venue, such as building code, fire code, food, beverage service, if you were to have those. Waste being removed by licensed person, you know, if you have porta-potties that the waste, if they, if you own the porta-potties or rent them, if you rent them, of course, then the waste always goes with, to the person that you rent from, and they're licensed, but that there'd be a licensed waste handler for that. And then no parking on the road right-of-way. And then, of course, we need that, you had alluded to keeping the, you know, the closing or the terminating, terminating date would be after it no longer belongs to a family member, and you were going to identify those?
Yes.
That family member, and do we need that now?
Okay.
And if I may, with one, Mr. Chair, the no parking on the right-of-way, I have a hard time, 'cause if somebody parks, you know, 200 yards down, I don't know how I'm gonna force that, you know, so that, unless I...
Do we put signs up?
Yeah, I know the problem.
I think the biggest thing is, as long as you don't allow it, you can't police it 100%, but if you see it, you take care of it.
Oh, definitely.
That's all, I guess any of them are, 'cause how else can you do it?
Right, yeah. Thank you.
And if you advertise it, you know, no parking on the road, things like that help.
Yep, okay, good idea.
Kirsten's in charge of the Facebook page, so she'll make sure she puts it on there.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask if there's any public comment. If there is, they can go up to the podium, state your name for the record.
These are on Rice Creek.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Is there any public comment? I have to ask three times, so I'll ask the third and final time, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on and close the public comment portion of this meeting, and so you guys ready for the criteria questions? Okay, just real quick, before we get into them, just so the record has it, we got a staff report, this is for Wicked Woods. The walk is supposed to expect to take a half hour, be September through November, all parking would be onsite. Prepackaged food, treats, hot chocolate, bottled water, non-alcoholic beverages may be offered, no public health licensing required for that. Porta-potty would be onsite, provided for the guests, and there'd be some onsite directing to people, just so them were said, so when we're thinking about these things, we can answer some of these questions. So, we'll start with question one, I'll go with Brent. The use will not put excessive burden on road, on roadways, utilities, public facilities such as parks and schools.
I don't think there'll be any excessive burden. They're gonna have off-road parking, up to possibly 400 cars. It sounds like it's limited in duration Saturdays and Sundays, for the most part, with the exception of MEA weekend. 30-foot approach for entrance and exit should be suffice. They're away from the school, but nearby, good visibility in that area, so I don't, I don't see any additional burdens on roadways, utilities, or public facilities.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add to question one? If not, we'll move on to question two, that'll be for Dave Stish. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for a purpose that is already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in area.
Yeah, the nearest neighbor is, nearest neighbor 500 feet away or 300 feet away? I saw both numbers.
350.
Okay, and that's from the farthest part of the event to the, to that person's home? Okay, so there's a good distance between the event and the closest neighbor, and that's all filled in with a pretty thick cover of trees, mature trees. So shouldn't be detrimental to any of the neighborhood, otherwise it's, you know, a pretty ideal location as far as roads and access from Royalton, from the north or from the south, a very good township road. So, yeah, and no input from other neighbors, other than positive, so see no problem there.
Okay, any other questions on, or any other comments on question two? If not, we'll move to question three, that'll be for Marvin. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Marvin?
I don't think, I believe so, because here, they've got over 5,000 trees planted, you can see adequate trees. As I stated, a family member has existing land around there, and that's all trees around there, too. They talked about a porta-potty as needed. I'm gonna recommend that we probably put a porta-potty right away in there, that might be a condition with that, but otherwise, I feel it's a rural area, it fits in there very well, and hours they're gonna be running, won't be affecting any of the neighbors.
Okay, anybody have anything to add to question three? Not, we'll move on to question four, I'll take that one. The use is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Yes, if you, in the ag zoning, this is approved use with a permit, and when we add some conditions on, like no parking, ticket sales stop at 11:00 with our end date, I think it meets with that, and some of the performance standards that we look at on these type of, I'd call it rural business, but with this type of permit, I would say, they follow all them standards, so I say, yes, it is consistent with the purposes and of the zoning ordinance and the zoning district. Anybody else have anything to add to question four? If not, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Brent, do you want to go with that one again?
Yeah, I don't think it's in conflict with it. We've talked about a porta-potty onsite, they've talked about having garbage receptacles to pick up anything that's handed out or that people might bring with them. Folks are gonna be walking on designated trails throughout the property, and it's pretty limited in duration, again, two days a week, we're talking two months, and maybe a one, four-day event during that time, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to add to that, that, you know, folks are only gonna be there for half an hour at a time, they won't make a big impact on it, but also that, you know, the, it's getting people outside, in the evening, in the country, for that short duration of time, not a large impact on the neighborhood. The comprehensive plan besides, and I think the parking lot could still be an ag use, could be a hayfield rest of the year. I don't know if that's your plans or not, but, so dual purpose with that zoning, used for this recreation and for ag, and the, oh, and the goals and objectives listed on the staff report, you know, are about ag, preserving ag, and local economic development. This is a, oh, a real business venture for this family, and we like seeing that. We've accommodated most of it, come with requests for expanding their opportunities out in the country, where they fit, and this fits pretty well, very well. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll vote on the questions, and then when we're voting, let's think of our conditions. We got no parking on the roadway, ticket sales stop at 11:00, and then end date, the end date would be... would be a list of family members that would no longer own the property, so at this time, we'd probably need them names, right, Amy?
I got it. Mr. Chair, they were provided to me, so I-
They were, okay.
So I do have them, so just to summarize, I've got four conditions.
Okay.
First, no parking on the road right of way, two, abide by all applicable laws that apply to this event, waste removal by a licensed provider, and then the end date with this list of family members.
Good, did you have the end time?
The, oh-
That ain't really, yeah, that's a condition.
Oh, the ticket sales.
Yep.
Yep, so that'd be a fifth.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
And I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, they talked about a porta potty if needed, but if they have that many individuals, I'd very highly recommend it.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to add that to the third condition, that a porta potty must be provided and the waste removed by a licensed provider?
I think that would fit in there good.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys got them then? Okay, we'll move on to vote then. Okay, question one. The use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Brent?
Yes.
Dave Stish?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Clint Catherine, myself is yes. Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the other property and immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant area. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Clint, myself is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay. Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Marvin?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question four, the use is, is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or water plan of the county. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Clint, myself is yes. Okay, all the questions here look like they were answered in affirmative.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to forward this for approval to the county commissioners with the conditions that we had stated.
Second.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to recommend approval with the five conditions listed. All in favor say aye. Marvin?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. Okay, we'll recommend this for approval at the, it'll be at the April 25th Commissioners' Meeting. Any questions between then and now, please refer to Land Services during business hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Rice Creek Hunting. Okay, so we have Rice Creek Family Farms, 16543 Game Farm Road, Little Falls, application for an interim use permit to place a shelter, so actually, it's not, it's an amendment. So it's an application for an amendment to an interim use permit to place a shelter over existing concrete located in point of southeast quarter, of southeast quarter, and north half of southwest quarter, section 27, Township 41, Range 31, Belle Prairie Township. If you guys would state your name for the record, please.
Greg LeBlanc.
Joseph LeBlanc.
Okay, so Amy, you ready for the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair, and then also I'm passing down Exhibit 1 and 2, that was provided by the applicant just now. Okay, this is an application for an amendment to the existing interim use permit to expand an event center. This is located in section 27 of Belle Prairie Township. The ordinance reference is 604.8, and that requires an interim use permit for limited rural businesses. Here is a plant map of Belle Prairie Township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here is the permit request received from the applicant, and a site drawing also provided by the applicant. Then here's an aerial photograph of the parcel. And then some oblique imagery as well. The property is known as Rice Creek Family Farms. In 1961, the LeBlanc family started the shooting preserve. In 1984, LeBlanc's Rice Creek Hunting and Recreation Incorporated was formed. Rice Creek Family Farms occupies 61.94 acres. Up until 2001, the Belle Prairie Township Board administered the zoning for the township, and the following conditional use permits were granted by the township, one in 1995 for a dog kennel, in 98, for a two-story house addition for overnight accommodations, and one in 2000 to operate a restaurant, and, and then a malt liquor license. The use of the property has expanded over the years to include youth camps, weddings, conferences, and other social events, and gun fairs. The Morrison County Board of Commissioners granted a conditional use permit to the property on December of 2014, and that was to undertake these construction, this construction items. The second one is really what we're gonna concentrate on, and that one was to pour a 70 by 70 concrete slab to serve as a permanent foundation for an event tent. In June 2017, the Board of Commissioners granted an interim use permit to expand the existing clubhouse with a 90 by 64 addition to provide indoor year-round space for events as well as year-round employment for staff. And that permit was granted with seven, seven conditions. The applicant is requesting an amendment to their existing interim use permit, and that is to construct a permanent structure on the 70 by 70 concrete pad that had been used as a foundation for an event tent. And that will allow for better, better accommodation of planned outdoor events in the case of inclement weather. No additional people will be accommodated with this expansion, and parking for events is on-site, and no parking on the road occurs. Access to the parcels is off Hawthorne Road, also known as County State Aid Highway 43, which is a paved county road. And the parcel is zoned agriculture, and the surrounding zoning is agriculture and shoreline residential. The applicable comprehensive plan, goals and objectives, is local economic development, goal C1, objective 8. Goal C2, objectives 1 and 2, 7 and 12. 19 notices were sent, no comment was received prior to the public hearing. And then here are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Amy. Is that this time the applicants have anything else to add?
Is it agriculture?
We're zoned commercial for the, or part of it.
Yep.
They have 20, I don't know how that works right now, since say, we put up the new addition, if that whole 60 acres is zoned commercial, or?
That's your tax classification? Is, is commercial the, the zoning district and your tax classifications are two separate things? So, the zoning district continues to be agriculture, but the tax classification is commercial?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It was just a question.
Yeah.
So, before I ask you guys, just remember, this is just, all we're looking at is for the structure that's on that concrete, okay? It's just an amendment to whatever they have already. So, you guys have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
Just a little clarification on the structure, is, is it going to, is it going to have side walls, or is it gonna be open walled?
We are building it open walled right now. That was a sketch, trying to get some idea how much it'll cost. I haven't turned it into the lumberyard yet.
Okay. But the, the, putting the, the roof on would be basically covering it with a roof, but having open side walls?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
I've been out here, location's always well taken care of. A run-off, water runoff from all the buildings is, it's a very well, well-grasped area, isn't it, and a lot of grass around the buildings? How, and that's your water, or storm water control? You don't have any erosion or from building runoff? I mean, with this building, you'll be concentrating water in, you know, along the eaves. Do you plan on guttering it? Will the grass along the edges accommodate all of that and disperse it? Do you have holding retention, water retention areas for that? Or aren't they, haven't they been needed?
They haven't been needed in the past. If you look at the, where the slab is, the white square, just to the south is a pond. So, it's pretty much on a hill of some sort, it's not a big hill, but all the runoff goes either to Rice Creek to the north or to that pond below. The way that is designed, the runoff would be towards that grass to the west. Or a, that's a P-rock gravel, P-rock gravel road there to the east. So, yeah, we haven't had any trouble with runoff at all, with it being, if we put that building up, the runoff would be east and west.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
I've been at your site numerous times, probably know who I am, but anyhow, my question, well-run facility, remember, on your, on your tent before, I believe you had sidewalls that you raised and lowered at times, and have you have any intent to close these in in the future, and would that have to be amended, or, okay?
Mr. Chair, no, we would be permitting, because the structure is roofed and permanent, we, so if they decided to enclose it later, it wouldn't need any additional permitting from, from us.
Okay, good, because I wouldn't want you to have to go through this again like that. But, yeah, anyhow, it's basically covering the same area what you had in a tent in there, but, yeah, everything's all very well organized, and you do a great job out there.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
So really, no change in the use of the, your facilities since the 2017 CUP amendment, and so the same conditions are applying, and those, and that's fine with you? The seven that have been recommended?
Yeah, mostly it's just a place, if it's raining, because when those brides walk out of that clubhouse and it's raining, they're crying.
Yeah.
And this would be a safety net for it.
They don't like to get married in the rain.
And it's only happened a couple of times, but it was tough. So they just postponed it for an hour or so, and then they went out and it started raining again, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't really have no questions myself, but just comment that where this is located, that ground around there, Dave alluded to maybe some runoff issues, there, there wouldn't be any, that's like super sandy, light soil, the water's gonna go down, any water that would hold, it's almost like a bowl if you go to the, to the west in that grass strip, it does slope that way, but I think it dips a little bit. And if not, it'll run to that pond, you got trees, there's all kinds of stuff, so we don't have to, it's just, it's a good place that you don't have to worry about a lot of water, I guess, because it, it absorbs fast. And then just note, if anybody has any other conditions, the only ones that I was kinda thinking of were the same seven that they had on their original, their original application when, for their original permit. If, I don't think there's any extra ones needed, unless you guys think of something, but if not, we'll move to a public comment. So if there's any public comment at this time, if you'd please go up to the podium. Any public comment? I'll ask the third and final time, any public comment? Not hearing any public comment, we'll close this section of the meeting for the public, or close it to the public. So at this time, I guess we'll move on to the criteria questions. So, we'll go, the first one. The use will not put excess of burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Dave?
As applicants have stated, same use as already in existence, this is just covering a, a slab, so have there been any, maybe a question for Amy? Have there been any complaints? Okay, there's no complaints, no input from the public. Same burden as, as in the past, which wasn't in excess.
Anybody else have anything to answer to question one? If not, we'll move to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the other property and immediate facilities for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Marvin?
Yes, well, they stated it was 61 acres they have there, they had existing tent that this will actually make it better facility, rather than flopping around a tent, they would have a secure structure here, so it would be better for the enjoyment of all the individuals there. And as we know, this business has been in existence probably about 40 years now, a well-run facility.
Anybody else have anything to add to question two? Okay, we'll move on to question three. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by this proposed use. I, I'd say yes. Only thing we're doing is adding a permanent structure versus a tent. I noted earlier in my comments that it's a very sandy-type soil, it absorbs water really fast, it isn't gonna really add any extra impervious surface or anything like that, that what's already been there. They're not really adding any of that, so as far as the groundwater, surface water, and air quality, by putting this structure up, that's not gonna affect that at all. Anybody else have anything to add on to question three? If not, we'll move to question four. The use is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Brent?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this is already a commercial use property. It's gonna be used in it better than with a tent, it's gonna be safer for those that are going to be there, it's gonna provide shelter for an existing use that's already there, and it's outdoors, so I don't, I don't see any issues with this being located and going up on that pad where the tent used to be.
Anybody else have anything to add to question four? If not, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Dave?
Uh, this business has been around for a long time, it's very popular, it's well-used and appreciated by their customers. They know what they're doing, they are enhancing their business with this addition and improving it. The goals stated in the staff report for, you know, it's consistent with ag and fits well in ag, but it's also meets the economic development goals that are in the comprehensive plan and give, which provides opportunities for entrepreneurs to, to do things like this, and enhance how the way they make a living. So, no, not in conflict with the plan or water plan.
Okay, you guys ready to vote? Keep in mind with our voting, the conditions that we'll have will be the same seven conditions that are on the previous, the main part of the, the interim use permit, so Amy has them wrote down right, so we don't have to say them, okay? So, we'll just go for the vote, unless you guys have anything else? Okay, we'll go to vote. Question one, the use will not put, put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Clint, myself is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant in area. Marvin?
Yes.
Um, myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question three, the use and the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related- Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question four, the use is, is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan in the county. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, all the questions have been answered in affirmative. Somebody have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
I move that we recommend this, uh, application for approval by the, um, county commissioners.
With the seven conditions?
With the, uh, conditions stated, five conditions or whatever they are, seven, I'm sorry.
I would second that.
Okay, then Brent. Okay, there's motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the commissioners with the seven conditions. All in favor will say aye. So Marvin?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Uh, myself Clint is aye. Okay, so we're gonna recommend this for approval to the commissioners and they'll decide that on their next county board meeting on April twenty-fifth. If you guys have anything you need before that, contact Amy or her staff at Land Services. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, you guys, all of you. Lot of desk.
Okay, we'll move on. So next up, we have Camp Shamana, so if you please wanna come up. Um, so we have Camp Shamana, um, Evangelist Free Church, uh, two, three, four, five, Ridge Road, Motley, Minnesota, application to amend the existing conditional use permit by adding a cabin located in point of government lots one and two, section eight, township one thirty-two, range thirty-one, Scandia Valley Township. If you had to say your name for the record, please.
Um, Kyle Strickland.
Hey Kyle, what's your position there?
Um, project manager, oversee construction and remodeling of facilities.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, uh, if Amy's ready for the staff report, we'll take that.
I am, Mr. Chair. This again is an application for an amendment to the conditional use permit to expand the camp by adding an additional cabin that was not included in the ten-year master plan. This is located in section eight of Scandia Valley Township. Section eight oh three and eight oh four point five require a conditional use permit to ex, uh, to expand and or change a planned unit development. Here's a plant map of Scandia Valley Township and the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the conditional use permit request received from the applicant along with a site drawing. And then also a survey. Here's some aerial imagery of the property. Camp Shamana is a year-round Christian camp and retreat center on Lake Shamana, which is a general development lake. Established in nineteen fifty-eight, the camp has acquired parcels over the years for a total of five parcels and seven hundred and seventeen point eight one acres. And then here is a, a map of all of the parcels that they have outlined in blue and yellow. The camp offers a variety of activities and amenities, including water activities such as tubing, water skiing, canoeing and fishing, along with outdoor recreation, including a high ropes course and zip line, frisbee golf, shooting sports, a nature center, horseback riding, sledding and playground. Indoor activities and amenities include a climbing wall, volleyball, dodgeball, floor hockey and basketball. In nineteen ninety-five, a conditional use permit was granted to expand the planned unit development by establishing campsites on an island, Zone Shoreland Residential. And then in nineteen ninety-six, a conditional use permit was granted to expand a planned unit, the planned unit development by including, uh, uh, eight-bedroom dormitory. In ninety-seven, a conditional use permit was granted to expand the planned unit development by the addition of an activity center. In nineteen ninety-eight, a conditional use permit was granted to expand, um, by the addition of a railroad car for sleeping quarters. In twenty seventeen, another CUP was granted, um, and that was to put an addition onto the existing chapel and put meeting space and then, um, put an addition onto the pine staff cabin. And then also adding two parcels to the conditional use permit. In twenty nineteen, another one was granted and this was a ten-year master plan. And then these are the conditions that were, that were assigned to that. And then in twenty twenty-two, the applicant updated the ten-year master plan and that includes the eleven projects listed. So today, the applicant is requesting to amend the existing conditional use permit to include the construction of one additional six hundred square foot cabin. That proposed cabin will meet all setbacks and will be connected to an existing septic system that has capacity. A surveyor has completed impervious surface and density calculations and the existing and proposed density and impervious surface is compliant. Uh, Lake Shamana does have varied development that includes three resorts, including Camp Shamana and many small seasonal and year-round residences. Lake Shamana is prone to flooding due to it being an isolated basin. There are efforts by the Shamana Lake Improvement District and private property owners to find a solution to stabilize the lake water level. The camp is served by Ridge Road, which is a paved township road. Suggested conditions if approved would be, just be to carry over the two from the last master plan and that is, uh, to not allow patrons and staff to utilize soaps and other cleansers within Lake Shamana and not to allow horses and other livestock to enter the waters of Lake Shamana. The applicable comprehensive clan, plan goals and objectives in shoreline management is goal D one and E three. Goal D ten, objective ten. Local economic development, goal C one, objective eight. Goal C two, objectives one, two, four, six and nineteen. And then the comprehensive water plan goals and objectives is the surface water goal, objective B, the land use and development goal, objective B. Fifty-four notices were sent and no comment was received prior to this hearing. And there are your criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, Amy. At this time, would applicant have anything to add or?
No, I don't have anything to add. I'll be happy to answer any questions though.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just seems like yesterday we were talking to him.
It was probably about a year ago from what I remember.
It may, yeah. And, yeah, we drilled him pretty good then.
Yeah.
And I think all of us were on the board at the time.
Yeah, I believe so.
Kind of nice to, uh, to have that continuity here. Uh, I'd just like to thank you for providing the, um, the stormwater plans that were part of your conditions and your twenty twenty-two, uh, application. And, uh, as you stated, the, um, the cabin that you're proposing, this pastor's cabin, is included in that watershed plan.
It is, yeah.
Yep. Otherwise, um, things are going as you planned and in your last master plan presentation?
It's moving along. I mean, we're still looking at funding sources right now for some of the bigger projects, so I'm not sure exactly when we'll start, but, you know, we're still moving forward for sure.
Yeah, things get more expensive all the time, don't they?
That they are.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have no questions, just a comment. As Dave stated, it was only a year ago you're here and we drilled you pretty good here and we were very impressed by your plan and as, uh, laid out here again, well-laid out plan and, uh, a very large facility, a very well-run facility, so it's all a comment on.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
Did you ever come up with a formal master plan? I mean, uh, you, you had what was in the application and I think that's, you, you had alluded that you might have formalized that a little bit. This would be added into that if we approve it. Could you, what you have in the application is enough or do you, would you like a copy of that master plan in a more formal way? Just a question.
I'm sorry, I was working on something for him, so ask me again.
Uh, master plan?
Yes.
He came up, what, they had presented one at the last, um, meeting in?
Yes.
May. And, um, this would be added into that?
Correct.
Um, do you need a formal copy of that or just the record is enough?
Don't, the record is enough because it just builds on itself because we're running this through as an amendment, so we're essentially just, would be adding that on, so we essentially would just be adding this project on to that existing ten, ten-year plan that had been approved. So I don't need anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, the only question I got, it's sometimes it gets confusing with all of our paper and stuff. So we pulled up a map, could you just point out where this cabin would go? It just helps a little better.
Over the screen?
Yeah, please, that'd be great.
Basically be right here, I believe it is.
Okay, close enough. At least it gives me a better visual than sometimes, so. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? I always will move to public comment.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
Just, you, you know, as we, uh, went through this just a couple of years ago, um, in twenty twenty-two actually, so, uh, last year, um, many of those things were to construct and, uh, complete. Do you have an idea of when this project would be constructed in that, mm, plan sequence?
This one will probably be the, in the fall, this fall.
So in twenty?
Correct.
Twenty-three yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this will move up with all the other things?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was the only question I had. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, at this time, we'll open up the public comment. If there's any public comment at this time, please go up to the podium and state your name for the record and say what you gotta say. Any public comment? I'll ask the third and final time, is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll close this section and meeting to the, to the public. So we'll move on to, uh, you guys ready for the criteria questions?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to them. Again, unless there's something else, the only conditions we kinda had was just them two, um, that were already previously kinda there, um, they're down on the bottom of the sheet that, about the soaps and, uh, livestock and horses being in the water, so. Okay, so we'll start with question one. The use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. Marvin?
Yes, well, it's almost seven hundred and eighteen acres, so a very large site. And it, the cabin will be in a remote area and it's a very small cabin, only six hundred square feet. And there's no utilities, there's no public, uh, facilities around, so it's a very remote area, so it will not.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add to Marvin's comments? If not, we'll move to question two. Um, the quest, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the other property and immediate vicinity um, for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. I'll take that one, um, no, they own a lot of the land around it. Um, they already have a big ten-year plan as far as constructing and building things. Um, this is just an amendment to add a small cabin, six hundred square feet. Um, it's in the woods, you're never gonna even see it. Um, that's what we kinda have, that whole area is designated for Camp Shamana. It's been there for quite a number of years already and, and hopefully for a lot longer in the future. So, um, I think, yeah, there, I would say yes, there will not be any detriment to the enjoyment of other properties or, or vacant properties or anything like that. Would anybody have anything else to add to question two? If not, we'll move to question three. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the pro, proposed use. Brent?
Um, I, I think it's obviously reasonably related to the existing land use there. This is, uh, one amendment to the ten-year master plan. We're talking about building it in a, or I guess better term would be remote or rural part of the camp. The stormwater, um, is in, in place, um, um, and it includes the proposed cabin. Um, it's gonna be connected to the existing sewer system that's already in place. So I think it is reasonably related to the existing use that's there now.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? I would just add that they have a really detailed, um, kind of water plan and impervious surface, um, they, 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 what, engineered, um, very detailed, um, so, yeah, that takes away any doubt, I think, that I would ever have, so. If not, we'll move to question four. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Dave?
Uh, camps are allowed in shore, in, uh, shoreline, uh, it's the only place they can be found, uh, and permitted. Uh, this one is very well planned, they have a master plan, they've, uh, got, uh, again, all, meet all of the intents of the ordinance within, uh, the shoreline, uh, air, zoning area.
Okay, anybody have anything to add to question four? If, if not, we'll move to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan in the county. Marvin?
Yes, and as they have a stormwater plan, it's all calculated out. Um, they went above, beyond most, uh, places and, yeah, it's absolutely not in conflict because they've, um, got it all laid out and we haven't had very few that have them detailed.
Okay, very good. Anybody have anything to add to question five?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to?
Go ahead, Dave.
That the, uh, missed, uh, that the applicant did a very good job of answering all of the questions in the application too, so if we need any more reasons, they've, they're in there.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay, we're gonna vote, and as we vote on these, think about the two conditions. Question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property and immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by this proposed use. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Okay, question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan in the county. Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, looks like all the criteria questions have been answered in affirmative. Uh, I guess I take a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to, uh, recommend this to the county board for their April fourth twenty-three, um, meeting with the, uh, conditions aforementioned.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to, uh, recommend approval to the county, board of county commissioners um, with the two conditions, all in favor say aye. Marvin?
Aye.
Uh, Brent?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Myself Clint is aye. Okay, so I guess we, we will recommend this for approval to the commissioners and that'll come up on their April eleventh meeting. We had the wrong date wrote down for the other applicant, so, um, yeah, April, yeah, April eleventh, so. Any questions between now and then, talk with Amy. Any questions between now and then, talk with Amy on land services.
Okay.
Thank you and good luck.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so next up we have Brad and Crystal Hartung, see if you'd wanna come up with the podium. Brad and Crystal Hartung, um, two oh, twenty-nine oh eight Dove Road, Bolus, uh, application for an interim use permit to allow for an agricultural equipment repair shop located in west half of northwest quarter, of northwest quarter, section twenty, township one twenty-seven, range thirty, Elmdale Township. If you'd please state your names for the record.
Brad Hartung.
Crystal Hartung.
Okay, thank you. Amy, you ready for the staff report?
I am, Mr. Chair, this is an application to establish an automotive repair shop located in section twenty of Elmdale Township. The ordinance reference for this request is section six oh four point seven, and that requires an interim use permit for automotive repair. Here's a plat map of the township, and the red dot is the location of the parcel, and then here is the permit request received from the applicant, along with a waste management business plan that I did email to you, uh, earlier today. And then here's an aerial photograph of the parcel. The applicant owns and lives on this eleven point six-five acre parcel, and the applicant is requesting an interim use permit to operate an agricultural equipment repair shop within the existing pole shed. No new construction is proposed. The parcel is served by Dove Road, also known as County State Aid Highway One. The applicant attended a development review team meeting, and at the meeting proper storage and disposal of automotive fluids and wastes was discussed, and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency fax sheets were emailed to the applicant. There is a floor drain in the building that currently daylights onto the ground surface. The applicant must install a holding tank to collect the water and debris from the equipment. The holding tank water must be properly disposed of. Uses on adjacent parcels are primarily rural residences and crop fields, the nearest home is immediately north of the shop. There is a tree line that provides screening on the north and east side of the shop. So here's an aerial photograph again, and then here is the shop, and then the residence, um, right here. And then here's some oblique imagery as well. So suggested conditions, if approved, would be abide by all applicable state and local laws regarding automotive repair and proper disposal of fluids and wastes. Two, maintain records of disposal of automotive fluids and wastes, and provide for review of records at the request of the Land Services Department. Three, no outdoor storage of vehicles or vehicle components, except for the vehicles on site for service, shall be located on the property. Four, a holding tank must be installed to collect the shop drain water by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, the water from the holding tank must be properly disposed of according to MPCA requirements. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives in agriculture is goal A one, objective six, goal A two, objective one. Local economic development, goal C one, objective one, and objective eight, goal C two, objectives one, two, four, seven and nineteen. Twenty-five notices were sent, one letter and a phone call was received prior to the public hearing. The phone call was from Don Breath, and he stated that he has no objection to the request. And then a letter, uh, from Michael Tretel, he said, "I am writing a letter to let you know I am one hundred percent in favor of granting an interim use permit to allow for an agricultural equipment repair shop for Brad and Crystal Hartung. They have a very clean home site, do very good work, and would be an asset to our community." All right, and then there are your interim use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Does the applicant have anything to add at this time?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go to the board for questions, I guess. One of my questions, them comments that come in, were they neighbors?
Yes.
And they just lived right next door?
The one was right north, Don Breath.
Okay.
And the other ones, a little ways down the road, half a mile.
Okay. Anybody in the board have any questions for the applicant? Marvin?
Mr. Chair, well, I, I know your site, and I'm, uh, kinda from that area like that, I know Don Breath, uh, quite well, so anyhow, uh, yeah, you've got a very nice site, and obviously it is too, but, uh, one question I had, um, here, it's stated automotive shop at the beginning, but, uh, it also stated farm equipment repair, will you be doing both, or, uh, what was your intent by the repair of the shop?
Just agriculture, tractor, ag equipment repair.
Yeah, and it's definitely in need of the area because you've got Jerry Check and Paul Fousey, and they're busier than heck, and, yeah, there's a much, a big need for, a large need for that, so, yeah. Okay, but no, that, no more questions at this time.
Dave, you got someone, I know you do.
Gosh, I'm trying to come up with something, but I really don't have any.
Okay.
They've answered the questions very well, and the, um, um, conditions, uh, that were proposed, I think answer all the concerns that I would have. You're familiar with the four conditions that, um, were up on the, um, slide here?
Yes.
And those all are fine with you, you can-
Yep.
You can make those work?
Yep.
Okay, you've got lots of, uh, off-road parking, I mean, you're quite a ways off of the road, you drive away, is how long?
It's fairly long, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you'll be off the road quite a ways.
Yeah.
I assume there's no concerns by the township, uh, on the use of the road, or-
No.
No, I mean, it's the tra, same traffic it gets anyway, as you pointed out.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
Uh, the road that they're on is a county state aid highway-
Best county.
And the county engineer does receive the packet, and I did not receive any comment from him.
All right. Yeah, and then you've got some trees, uh, for screening for the neighbors, and-
Yes.
Mm-hmm. No, it looks, it's like a good proposal.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marvin.
Uh, one more question, I, I know it's a relatively new home that you, you built there in your site, your buildings, what year was that built again?
Twenty twenty-one, I believe, right?
Okay, so it's-
Twenty or twenty-one.
New.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead, Brent.
Um, just one question, maybe it's, maybe Amy can answer this, I, I don't know, um, with repair shops of vehicles and whatnot, they can sometimes add up and collect, if you will, and there's multiple cars on a single property, is there anything with, um, uh, my, my concern was with, um, say, end-of-life equipment, somebody's agricultural equipment can't be used, and before we start, and you, obviously you probably don't want that on your property, it's gonna need to be removed or, or kept clean, and, and I'm curious if there's-
Yes.
Something that addresses that.
Mr. Chair, uh, if you look at the conditions that are suggested, the third one gets at that, uh, that no outdoor storage of vehicles or vehicle components, except for the vehicles on site for service, shall be located on the property, so there would be no boneyard for parts, there would be no, the, the person would need to bring their piece of equipment, get it repaired and remove it, and so, uh, unless you would like to craft that condition differently, if you don't feel that that gets to that, that's what that is getting at, so that we avoid that issue.
So my only question was, that's our condition that we're placing on there, but is there anything in county ordinance that also addresses that?
We do have thresholds for junkyards, um, and those are not allowed in the ag zoning district, and so if, if a property is getting to that point where it's meeting the definition of a, of a junkyard, then that would be a whole other issue that we would be dealing with.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
Uh, being a past mechanic for quite a few years doing this, I will restate the others here, sometimes you gotta wait some time for parts, and, uh, a while ago, there was times that individuals had to wait up to a year, so, uh, to understand, and sometimes you may have pieces of equipment that have to sit there for some time before the parts show up before you can work on it, and I don't want your hands tied and getting in trouble over that.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
Well, the wording in number three here, um, I think allows for that, uh, vehicles on site for service, uh, even if they're a vehicle that you'll be taking parts off for a service job, I would assume there'd be flexibility for that, I'd hope, so, I don't think this would be overly restrictive, but, and I can see your point, we wouldn't want it to be. Are you concerned with that at all?
No, I don't think so.
All right.
Okay, so my only question to go along with that, I'll just ask the applicant, is, do you see a need to ever have any of, some of them extra parts, you know, a rear end or something sticking around? Is that something in the future that maybe you possibly, um, want? My, my main, my main, uh, objective to asking that question is, then we'd probably wanna put a condition that it's in a fenced-in area, so nobody could see it, if it's something that's gonna be, where it could be potentially, uh, um, oil-filled or antifreeze-filled, that it'd have to be in a contained, a contained building or something like that, so that's why I'm just asking if that's something that you could see in the future.
It's possible, but not, I think I would take off what I need and get rid of it.
Okay, so we'll just leave it going, if that business expands, you come back and ask for something later then.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, other than that, all I really had was some comments, um, the applicant, uh, reading through the application, um, it's pretty self-explanatory, I think, uh, the things were answered really good, um, Amy emailed us the business plan for the waste management for, for all the different, uh, you know, the waste, the tires, the used oil, um, towels, wipes, they got all kinds of business plans to take care of them type of things, so I think that answers a lot of our questions, I think, and, uh, so that, that was great. And, uh, so the only other thing, I think, uh, as far as conditions, the only thing that maybe I would say to conditions is we just say the business plan for the waste management, that that would all be one, you know, one condition, and then another thing we have to take care of is the end date, um, for this type of permit, so typically most of the people, they just put the end date for this permit when you no longer own the property, or, like we had applicant earlier, they wanted their children or something, so what, what would be your ideal, idea for, um, an end date for this permit?
We wanted, uh, with children too, in case anyone wanted to take over.
Okay, and then do you have that listed?
I would need the names of the children. Thank you.
Okay. All right, you guys are good on questions? Okay, we'll open up the public comment at this time. Is there any public comment for this? Any public comment?
My name is Scott Rudolph.
Um, you might have turned it on, I don't know.
It was on-
Might have timed out or went dead.
There's a button on the bottom, on the very bottom.
If you can't get into work, just come up to the front here, there ain't a lot of you guys, we'll just go ahead and speak in the microphone so we can hear.
Uh, my name is Scott Rudolph, I'm a neighbor of Brad's, just on the road, and I have an automotive shop out of my property, we've done this five years ago, I believe it was, and I've had a successful business out of there, Brad does really good work, he's on the agricultural end of it, which we all need in that area, tons of farms, so, it's, it's a good thing for the community, that's, that's all I wanna say.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll ask one more time, and then we'll close it, any other public comment? Okay, not hearing any other public comment, we'll close this portion of meeting to the public. Um, so we'll move on to going through our, uh, criteria questions. Again, keep in mind, so far the only conditions I have is our end date, and that's, uh, with, uh, as long as they own the property or their children, which Amy has a list of their names, and then probably putting in a condition that they follow their, um, um, waste, um, management plan that they have for all their stuff, so, um-
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Amy.
There are four suggested conditions within the staff report, I believe, uh, item number one will probably ensure that they abide by that, um, because that one is to abide by all applicable state and local laws regarding automotive repair and proper disposal of fluids and wastes, and, uh, so that, that plan, um, would be there, but then this condition would also, uh, ensure that?
Yeah, so actually we could, uh-
So, Mr. Chair-
We'll do four plus two. What one's end date?
The end date would be-
Oh, right there.
Condition five.
Okay, and then this plan. Oh, no, that's all by state, okay, I, I understand. Okay, so you guys understand the-
Four plus-
The four, that, you have four plus one with end date.
Equals six.
Yeah.
Got it.
I'm better math than that, come on, man. So we'll move on to the criteria questions. Okay, question one, uh, the use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools, um, I'll take that one, um, yes, it will not put an excess of burden on roadways, there is no schools or parks in any facility close to this, um, um, there's, on all sides, there's, uh, township, county roads, um, we're talking implements, I think, uh, the engineer didn't weigh in if one would come in on a semi because it's broke down, um, evidently the county road's good enough to handle that, or he would've weighed in on that, so, um, I, I believe it won't put no excess burden, we're not talking about four thousand vehicles going up and down there a year, so, um, wouldn't take much more for utilities than what's already been used on the facility, um, maybe just a little more electricity, but nothing out of the ordinary, so, yes, it will not put an excess burden on the roadways, utilities and public facilities. Anybody else have anything to ask, or add to question one? If not, we'll move to question two. The requests will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of the, of other property and immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Brent?
Um, well, this is primarily ag, um, ag district, there's, uh, ag in the immediate area, um, there's definitely a need for, uh, folks to have a guy to take something to, everybody's gotta have a guy. Nice that there's a guy that does the auto repair down the road, so having somebody that does ag in the immediate area is beneficial. It's gonna be done on the inside of the property, or inside, uh, buildings, uh, as long as the, that's permitting, um, we heard, uh, comments by letter, uh, tonight, and we heard from one, uh, individual in person tonight, uh, commenting on this, so, um, I don't think it's going to affect the, um, uh, immediate vicinity, uh, or be detrimental to anybody, uh, be just the opposite.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Anybody have anything to add to question two? If not, we'll move to question three. The use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface, groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Dave?
I think the applicant did a very good job of answering all of the questions, and his answer to number three is, the work is done in the shop, any environmental hazards will be collected and stored in appropriate containers and, as requested by local laws, um, and also as, uh, Brent had stated, it's an ag shop in, primarily ag, uh, district, all sorts of farm and farm uses around it, so it fits.
Okay, anybody have anything to add to question three? If not, we'll move to four. Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Marvin?
Uh, yes, it's a perfect location, as Dave stated ear, earlier here, this ag shop in ag area, supporting ag, it's, it's needed, and you got auto, automotive shop nearby, uh, and it, so it fits very well in the area, you've had two, uh, tire roads right around there, um, almost, uh, twelve acres, so it, it definitely fits in ordinance there.
Okay, anything to add to, uh, question four? If not, we'll go to question five. If not, we'll go to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. I'll take that, and the answer would be yes, it is not in conflict. For one, um, for the use, you can use out there, there's a lot of trees planted around there, around the yard. So that's gonna help minimize dust, help with erosion or water, which he ain't really doing anything different. The buildings are already there with his waste management plans and, and things that he has in a, that he's got in his plan that he's gonna do. That mitigates and takes care of a lot of the, the contamination risk as far as the proper storage of oil and, and, uh, waste oil, antifreeze, rags, all the way to the, to the sewer, and his floor drains, he's got that all in his plan. So yes, I do believe there will not be a conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan because of that. Anybody else have anything to add to question five?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to add, like, you're a good neighbor, the auto mechanic, which I think I remember you got, you in the, being up front here at one time. But, you know, God didn't make enough of you guys, I'm glad that both of you are out there and have the initiative to start your own business and, and just wish you best of luck. Did that answer the question at all? I think it did.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote. Okay, we'll vote on these questions with the five conditions with the added one of the end date, so that equals six. So, here we go, no, it was four plus. I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry, you guys.
Slap them.
Whatever. Question one, the, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. Um, myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Question three, the use and opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Marvin?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Question five, the use is, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Okay, all the questions were answered in affirmative.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
I'd like to recommend for approval to forward this to the county commissioners with the conditions we had stated earlier. Five conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to recommend approval to the county commissioners. All in favor, say aye. Marv?
Aye.
Uh, Brent?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Myself Clint is aye. Uh, motion, or so, we'll recommend approval to the county commissioners, that'll go before them on April eleventh. Um, so if you have any questions between now and that time, contact Land Services and they'll help you through it.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Good luck with it.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we got some minutes. You guys get a chance to look through the minutes from March twenty-first.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made seconded to approve the March twenty-first minutes, all in favor say aye. Marv?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Dave? Myself is aye. Any new business? No, not that I know of, I don't know of any old business, unless Amy has anything.
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if not, we'll take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made seconded adjourned, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Your turn, Dave.